With allegiance to the planning of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. I'm hearing us, yes. That's, that's drought, that's quite distracting.
Welcome to everyone, thank you for joining me tonight. And at this time, like to see if we have any adjustments or additions to our agenda. That's the agenda and the difference. And you all received an electronic copy of the petition statement first. Are there any changes that we can make? If not, I would be happy to make a motion to the district.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes.
The board made a motion to the district. All parties with a second on a favor.
Aha.
Yep, so we're still on. So tonight we have two orders of new business. They are both proposed amendments. Both have been sent to us in different names, but that's helpful. And the first one that we will reiterate is that we need to share, they had to present public property funded by the Republican Party. It's presented from Chief Livingston, then a builder of our fire department, because that's coming from a private citizen rather than a non-private citizen. Which they have done. They voted, they have not voted for it to have on the table. So that's where we are now. We are looking at that. So like, I could go through the bad ones. To reiterate, as I'm sure that you have read, or to record, we don't make an addition of that. We just have recommendations to make.
Thank you. So I'm just going to summarize my staff report for the record and for those listening online. I'm happy to answer any questions from the planning board and I'll welcome Chief Livingston up from Mills River Fire and Rescue. Again, the petitioner submitted the application for this text amendment. Again, Mills River Fire and Rescue seeks to have an LED sign or a digital changeable copy sign at their new headquarters station property of 5,400 Boilston Highway. Currently, the town has a prohibition on all electronic changeable copy signs. This ordinance has been amended a couple of times. So the prohibition on, I'll just say LED signs was enacted on March 13th, 2020. Before that, digital, digital changeable copy signs or LED signs were permitted by right. So staff approval on any general business zone property or any other zone property could apply for a special use permit or final approval of the county council to get for an LED sign. And that ordinance language went back, was established November of 2017. I just wanted to highlight the site in question. So the section of Boilston Highway running in front of the new headquarters station. NCDOT keeps annual average daily traffic counts where basically they pay the average traffic count for vehicles over a year and come up with daily average. So the average be number of vehicles driving past that property in any day is 17,000. That data is from 2020 and is most likely increased. And then looking at the zone zoning, the fire department property and the neighboring properties on that side of Boilston Highway are all zone general business. And then the properties across the street are all zone neighborhood commercial. So that's the background. So the proposed tax amendment modifies 154.26OB of the town zoning code, specifically the section on signs. Allowing for electronic changeable copy signs on public property impacted use by a unit of government, emergency services agency, or municipal corporation. I'll stop there. The chair had asked for definitions for those terms. Each board member and someone from the public wants a copy, I think we have a few extras here, should have one and a half page or there's a little bit on the back with definitions of those terms. So sign regulations have gotten a little tricky lately. Recent Supreme Court decisions have reinforced that sign regulations have to be content neutral. So you can't regulate or assign based on the message on the sign face. So right now, what is legal is enforcing time, place, and manner restrictions. So time being the duration of display, place, the location of type of property. Again, we were focusing on public, but that could be by zoning district as well. And then manner being the type of sign, sign materials, construction, et cetera. So again, those are allowed, provided there's no reference to the content of written speech. The regulation is narrowly tailored to serve a government interest and the regulation leaves open ample alternative channels for communication. Because we've had a couple of Supreme Court decisions on this, it's just my job. I did want to inform the planning board that much of our sign code is currently out of compliance with constitutional free speech provisions. According to current case law, we have restrictions calling out differing regulations for agricultural signs versus real estate signs versus construction signs. And that's, that's specifically what's disallowed because to know if something's a real estate sign, you need to read the message. And that, that's what we need to get away from. But again, that, that is not what we're focusing on tonight. So staff worked with Chief Livingston to develop this language and we found the most legally sound way to allow for LED sign for the petitioner is to exempt public property from the prohibition. And again, the specific wording is public property in active use by a unit of government, emergency services agency, or municipal corporation. Again, this meets the constitutional limits because the regulation is based on place, public property, manner, type of sign, the LED sign. And the regulation also serves a government interest because the prohibition of LED signs on private property protects the rural character of Mills River. And exempting public property from the prohibition. Basically, those signs could be displaying messages of a public purpose, you know, that could be educating and serving the greater Mills River community. Whereas a lot of private or, or commercial LED signs would be, again, could be advertising that a profit of single profit, property owner or business. So that's what's before you tonight. Staff has recommended approval of this text amendment due to consistency with the comprehensive plan. The specific sections are an attachment C in your statement of inconsistency. And that's the end of my summary. I'm happy to take any questions or we could invite Chief Livingston up.
The only question I have right now, and I don't on the map that you gave us for public properties, just trying to figure out what a couple of those are because I didn't have a chance to go out and drive that. First of all, the large green section up here, can you tell me where that is exactly? I couldn't blow it up to see.
I'm going to pull it up on the screen so I can get it to be on Facebook. Thanks for your patience. So staff actually put together, staff put together a map of public properties in the town that would need these requirements. So I'll, I'll call out if you So this is the northern end of our jurisdiction. This is Highland Vista up here. These are the NCSU horticultural properties. Again, part of the state, it's the republic. The one school over here. Lynn Marlowe. Here is the town of Mills River property. This property surrounds the Pardee outpatient surgery center. The Pardee property is actually the little rectangle that is private. But originally that was Henderson County property as well. And it's just because, and I don't know the exact reasons or the legal structuring of it, but because the county contracts or has Pardee as their primary healthcare provider, the county owned the land and then sold it to a private entity, an LLC. Once it was developed, subdivided. I think we did that commercial subdivision back in early 2001. So the remaining property is all, wait, sorry, Henderson County property. We have the city of Hendersonville Water Department right here. Have middle school here, Alphons.
Mills River Elementary. That's the park.
We have the Banner Farm Road Town property here. This is the new headquarters fire station. This is the current fire station headquarters. And then a couple of these are pretty small, but this is another fire station property on South Boilston. And then even if we go up, again, there's a little dot up here, but the other fire station property, not even the one that held on. But we did, we basically classified all the properties based on tax data taken from Henderson County records. And that's what resulted.
So anyone have any more questions for Mike before we ask Chief, will he soon come up? Nope.
Good evening. There's a few of you that I know and some others that I don't know. But for those that I don't know, I'm Rick Livingston, I'm the fire chief at the Mills River Fire Department. I've been for a number of years. That just means I'm getting older. But I'm going to pass my cellphone around for a second. Before I do that, I've got several of my board of directors with me tonight. I'd like to thank them for coming. And also, for those of you that don't know, I've been on the county planning board for about 15 years. So I have a firsthand appreciation for what everyone and you do. And I'd just like to say thanks for your service. I, I suffer with you from time to time. But again, I'm going to pass this around. This is just to give you some idea of what we have in mind. Ours would be, ours would actually look better than this because the bottom of ours would be rock where this is brick. And the top part would be brick to match our station, our building. But this just gives you some idea. That station happens to be in South Carolina and we, we took some ideas from their station and incorporated those into our architectural plans. I just grabbed a, a shot of their sign while we were down there, but I just give you some. Please understand, this is nothing for the fire department. This is pure and simply an additional service that we would like to provide for this community in this town. The, the comment was made, and I'd just like to address this, but the comment was made in the council meeting that social media could provide the same services that we're wanting to provide through this sign. Well, without saying too much, I'll just say this, there's, there's a lot of people in Mills River, including myself, who either don't use social media, and I have good reasons. I, I use it on a limited basis, but there's a whole lot of people in Mills River that never touch social media that we could touch through this sign. And I just wanted to to touch on that for a second. Please, if you have questions as I go through this, don't hesitate to interrupt me. But basically, the way that, that we're looking at this sign is as a, a public safety tool to reach our community. Oh, in a, in a fast and efficient manner. So what are some of the reasons or what are some of the things that we would put on that sign message wise? I've, I've got a list here. I'll just go down those quickly. But the North Carolina Forest Service, you may, you may already know about those. I hope you do. But in the event that you don't, I'll, I'll explain it briefly. They issue fire danger ratings all through the year. It, it's called an RP plan or a readiness plan. It, it allows us to plan. It tells me when I need to overstaff, for instance, during very dry times, windy times, low humidity tops, all that kind of stuff. But we could put those fire danger ratings on our sign. And it wouldn't just help us as firefighters, but it would help the community at large to, to better understand, you know, how to plan, when not to burn, when it's safe to burn, all that kind of stuff. That will be a one example. There are times, as you know, when burning bans are implemented. Those can be implemented through the state and the North Carolina Forest Service, or they can be implemented locally by Henderson County or the town of Mills River. Typically, the municipalities follow suit with the state burning bans and the county does likewise. So you might chuckle at this one, but I'm sure all of you have smoke alarms in your homes. But how many of you remember to check or change your batteries on a regular basis? Probably not everyone in this room, I would, I would guess. But something as simple as that, you know, put it on the sign, please check or change the batteries in your smoke alarm. And pick a day, your birthday, Christmas, Thanksgiving, whatever, and do it at least annually. Community CPR classes. Ironically, we're having one of those October the 11th coming up very soon. And anyone who lives in our fire district can take that class free of charge. If you live outside our fire district, it'll cost you 30 bucks. But if you live in Mills River, we'll cover all the costs for you. But just to get the word out about something like that, or a first aid class, for instance, we do those occasionally. And just a couple more examples. Now, this next one, yes, it does somewhat benefit the fire department. Occasionally, we have special events. We had one a couple of weeks ago. Our ladies auxiliary had a yard sale up at Station 3 on Bolston Highway. And we have a flower sale in the spring, annual flower sale, things like that. We could get the word out in a more efficient manner. And yes, I guess that would benefit the fire department. This doesn't happen often, but occasionally, and we have, we have had to do this, but we'll have a, a brush fire or a wildland fire. And we'll have to evacuate folks from their homes. And we have to close roads to allow access for fire department and forest service apparatus and, and that kind of thing. But in a situation like that, obviously, time is of the essence. And if we could throw that out there on our sign quickly and let people know, you know, north Mills River roads close from Pennsylvania road up, for instance. That's just a huge help to us and, and anyone who lives in that area as well. This next one. And we, we have to deal with this on an increasingly frequent timeframe. Most of you may not be aware of this, but, and, and it's not just true in Mills River, it's all over the county. But we have a, a large number of folks who either have dementia or Alzheimer's or autism. And they wander away from home. And we spend a lot of time looking for those folks who have wandered away from home. But if we could just throw it out there on the sign, you'll be alert for and give a brief description. And if that person walks out of the woods onto a highway somewhere, you, people will know to be looking, keep their eyes open and call 911 if they see them. Just another example of, of how this sign would help. But that's it in a nutshell. And with, with Mike's presentation, you saw that, you, if, if this is approved, this is not opening the floodgates, folks. You saw it on the map. If, if you take away the land that the town owns and the fire department owns and the schools own, there's really very little left, honestly. So it's not like we're opening the floodgates for electronic signs. Please understand. So if you have questions about anything that I said, or if you have fire department questions in general, I'll, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
For the floor now, if anyone has any specific questions they'd like to ask Chief Livingston or do some formal discussion.
Chief, I'd like to ask, um, the 32 square feet, is your restriction a little bit further down? Is your sign going to be a four by eight sheet of plywood?
That's, that's plenty big. Yeah. That's plenty big. And I'll just share with you a, a business owner in our fire district bought a, a sign. It, it might not even be that big. It's certainly no bigger than that. But he bought a sign for his business. And before he got it erected, the town passed the ordinance prohibiting that. So he has a brand new sign that he has no use for. And he's offered it to the fire department free of charge. So we may have a we may have something there. I haven't even looked at it, but it's a brand new sign. But yeah, I mean, 32 square feet is, world's plenty.
And it died probably dim a little bit or?
We could. There were the council member that, that asked me about that. And, you know, if that's what y'all want, we, we can do that. It, it would certainly not be and all of you and, and myself as well, we have seen some signs that I would describe as distracting, especially not their, their flashing. Little, little bit too much, in my opinion. And the last thing that we want to do is distract drivers and cause an accident. So you, you just trust us enough to know that we're, we're not going to do that.
Okay. First, let me ask Rick. And Mike, Mike something. All the stipulations about electronic signs that we originally, and I think they're still in the ordinance, right? They will apply if this is approved, right?
That's correct.
Like shall be located on a freestanding sign on.
Correct.
And it can't be over 32 square feet. And they have to remain in a fixed position. Right now it says eight seconds. And it shall not contain, contain any flashing, scrolling, blinking, or similar type movements. And transition must be instantaneously. And, and it should have a black background screen or a green, a green or, I'm waiting, it should have all lighted character letters and numbers shall only be green or red. This is what we talked about when this was all came about back in 2017. And let me say, I agree with what Rick is proposing. They certainly need it. And they certainly can put it to a good use and will, I'm sure. And matter of fact, I think the town ought to be considering doing the same thing because we're going to have to replace this one out here real soon anyway, because it's 191. In fact, I think all businesses should be allowed to have one based on these stipulations that we've already put in here because we pretty much covered all these concerns that people had about the flashing and all this stuff. What we're talking about is a sign that is easily changed without somebody having to climb a ladder and this business having to pay somebody $25 an hour to climb a ladder. Plus, you know, they may fall off and get that. So I, what I would like to say, like I said, I'm all in favor of this if we can't get anything else. But I would love to see us put that back in there, that it was not permitted on private property. Maybe change it or if we have to, do something where business can do it. Having used these type signs for many, many years, back in my other life, sort of. They, they're just a valuable tool to a business to, and because what they want to do is they spend their money to come here and provide. Particularly, I know we're always clamoring for new restaurants and all. Restaurant is one that could benefit from this type of sign more than probably than anybody else that I know of. But anyway, and we've already addressed those concerns that people have. So we have this sign ordinance that we came up with, and we talk about our parrots from Mills River. So we have this sign ordinance that we came up with, and we talk about our parrots from Mills River. Great. I hate to say it changed, but some things have changed. We're not enforcing what we now have. But we've got trailer signs and other signs that's terrible looking. So we're worried about our parrots. We need to start doing something about those too. You look at the LED signs that we do have. People who have those paid a lot of money for them and they're proud of them. And they are certainly gonna keep them working, because if they don't work, they've wasted their money. And I, I just think we need to consider adding back the one that businesses could also do the same thing. And, you know, that's what was in the original ordinance that we came up with. I just think we need to be proactive instead of reactive. Because as Mike said, there's already been some lawsuits, some, some court decisions. And I see in the future, another court suit about these type of signs, it's gonna cost the town a lot of money to defend. That's just my opinion. I just wanna throw it out there.
I can turn my thing off without dropping it. I did notice one thing with this, and I, I appreciate the map, by the way, Mike. That's very helpful and everything like that. The one thing that when I did my research on this is, and this is just where it's coming from, it's, and dealing with children and education and everything like that. If we are interested in a younger demographic seeing the sign, that's the sign they're gonna see. I do know that much. That's, that's just a truth there, so.
Maybe I shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna say it. Folks, this is two thousand twenty-two. It's not nineteen twenty-two. I mean, let's get with the program.
And I think Rick touched on basically my thoughts on. Of course, I'm never too far away from this thing. I live by it. But I'm, most of the people in Mills River, it was mentioned at the council meeting. Well, we can send out an email, or we can post it on your Facebook page. That's taking a valuable time from your people to have to do that too. And, and one other thing I forgot, I talked about businesses having this ability. I think if we had businesses, if we formed a agreement with businesses or ask them, most of them, or if not all of them, would be more than willing to do the same promotion that you're talking about on their signs when we, when the need be. So we have, we don't have any notification system in Mills, Mills River that can reach a lot of people quickly. So that'd be another thing I would say, if we could get businesses on board and have, just work to have an agreement with them that, hey, well, we need something put out in a hurry. Would you put it on your sign? Yes, because we can change it every eight, ten seconds, eight seconds now. Maybe we need to increase that. But you, but it's, it's changeable, you know, and if you're driving down the road, even eight seconds, because I've been paying close attention to that, something's on the sign, and you're driving down the road, eight seconds is enough to read it. You, you, you pass it by them less than eight seconds anyway, so.
And needless to say, if the town has some event going on, and, and one that comes to mind is the sanitary that the fire department's heavily involved in each year, and we will continue to be involved in that. But you please understand, if we need to put something on our sign for the town, happy to do that.
My point. Yeah, I'd like to say that. Appreciate you pursuing this. I worked in public safety thirty years, emergency management director prior to retirement in North Georgia. But I can think of countless things you can use this for in warning the public, from weather to fire dangers and even ice on the roads, black ice, or, you know, if you have the opportunity to get them out there. I appreciate y'all for saying.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, because this past weekend, obviously, things didn't turn out as badly as what they were predicting. I'm happy with that, obviously, but, you know, something as simple as that. We could get, we could get the message out there to folks to let them know what to expect and they can.
I agree. A lot of people think it's just a coastal danger, but it's not. I know in North Georgia, we had when was it, about ninety-five, we had a hurricane come that far in. And we had a lot of trees come down across the mountains. I know one fell house I had. And, but anyway, it's a threat even inland.
And along those same lines, flooding. And you say what you want, but flooding is becoming more and more and more and more prevalent. We're seeing what they're calling five hundred year floods. We're seeing those on a pretty regular basis. Not right here in Mills River, but in, in a lot of areas in the state and the country. You know, a five hundred year flood used to be unheard of. Now they're happening regularly. So, you, that's just another example. We could use that sign to let people know about flooding events and hurricane remnant events and.
Chief, but a lot of these messages aren't even, I'm not on social media either, by the way, at all. Um, I live right here. Twenty, near twenty thousand people a day. Those people aren't here on our local social media anyway.
Sure.
Flood roads, smoke, fire danger, all the stuff you're talking about. You're not reaching those people from social.
Absolutely not.
Hundred percent favor. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm a hundred percent in favor. Um, I think even as simple as a heat index, when it gets really hot, you need to be beware, because that kind of thing could sneak up on you. And a four by eight sign is little. A sheet of plywood, that's little. If you're gonna advertise something really big, you want a sign bigger than that. These aren't billboards. These are four by eight.
I think all of you know this, but in case you don't, I'll just say it. Our goal is not to stir up hate and discontent in Mills River. As long as I'm your fire chief, and as long as I have the board of directors that I have, we're gonna do things the right way. And, you know, we have an excellent relationship with the community. We have had forever, and we're gonna work hard to maintain that. We're not gonna do something stupid or dumb to destroy that.
So what is your plan to address folks like myself who never drive by where the station is going to be? How will you give the information to them?
I am not. Please take what I said earlier about social media. Take that with a grain of salt. I'm not anti-social media. Social media has its place, absolutely. We have a website. Uh, this question was asked of me during the council meeting the fire department utilizing social media to disseminate information. And yes, we will do that. And I, I'll tell you folks the same thing that I told council. We don't currently do a good job of that, in my opinion, and that's my fault. Nobody else's, but mine. But we're gonna work on that. We're gonna keep our website more current and up to date and get it to the point that it should be, because like I say, right now, today, I'm not, I'm not overly happy with it. But that's one avenue that we can use in addition to the sign to get the word out.
I heard you mentioned at the town council meeting that your plan was only to have a sign at the main station, not at the substation.
I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, Sheri. As I see it, I don't. And none of us, i- if this ever changes, none of us will be around here to, to deal with it, because it's gonna be this way for a long time. I don't ever see the need to have a sign like this at our substations. Uh, there's just no reason for it. Two of those three locations are, I would classify them as rather remote anyway. Uh, Station Two and Station Four. They're kind of off the beaten path anyway, so you're not gonna, you're not gonna reach a large number of people there. And Station Three is on two eighty anyway, so there's really no need to have two signs doing the same thing on that stretch of highway. Those are just my thoughts. I, I don't, I just don't see the need for it at our three substations.
I can see the need to, maybe the one over by Glen Moro, it would be nice to have one over there. And, and if, when this is passed, uh, if I understand it correctly, you could, maybe somebody will come along and donate the money to do it.
And, you know, one thing I've learned through the years in the fire service is never say never. But Jim, I don't think you and I'll have to worry about that.
I'm just going to put it out there. I'm playing devil's advocate, and I realize that I have a vested interest in the fire department, as you, you guys all know. And I think your purpose in the sign is a valid purpose. My only concern is, is the other properties and what might come, particularly the, the party property, what might eventually be there, and what kind of signs might go there. That might be very miniscule. I, Jim and I have never agreed on this, and we still don't agree on it, and that's okay. I still respect him. You know, I don't think the town should allow any business to have any sort of electronic sign, because I do think that detracts from the nature of our town. So that, that would be, my only concern is what, other than the fire department, what it might include on, on any of these. Even though they, looking at the map, there, there's not a lot of them. There, you know, you've got the one in the main drag, you know, and I don't think the town should have an electronic sign out advertising anything. But that's just me, and I certainly, I know I'm a voice in the wilderness, and I respect everybody's differing opinions, and I certainly respect the dog and cats do as well. Right? Any other discussion? All right, so if, if we've discussed and asked questions, then it's time for a motion from someone.
And just to clarify, you can either do two motions, one recommending approval and one adopting a statement of consistency, or you can do it in a single.
Whoever's linking that motion, we got that? That's always the deal.
And, and you don't have to read the full statement of consistency. You can just state, you know, if you so choose, adopting the statement of consistency for the TXT twenty-two.
Well, I would make that motion. Not what I really, really would like, but we'll take what we can get right now. So I would like to make that motion. Okay, text amendment twenty-two dash oh two, that we approve it. As written.
So you recommend approval, and you have to say, say that you're adopting the statement of consistency as written.
Okay. I recommend approval of text amendment twenty-two oh two and the, and adoption, where's it at? Statement of where's it at on here?
It's not.
It's not. But anyway, well, I gotta cop some work, but anyway, of the adoption of the statement of consistency. Okay.
So Mr. Foster has, has made a motion. Is there a second question?
A second.
By Mr. Oliver. Any additional discussion? Oliver, I agree with that. So we will send that back to town council. Are there, is this a public hearing or does it?
Yeah, so the tentative schedule is that at the next council meeting, which I think is October thirteen. Um, we've set the public hearing date to November. Public hearing and deliberation will be at the November, first November council meeting.
Before we move on, if you guys would like to take this opportunity to leave, you can. Before we move on to additional things, that's completely up to you. Now's your chance.
Thank, thank you for all your support. If you ever have questions or concerns, my door is always open.
Look for you on social media.
Something, anything.
We can probably take Sherri's bit, this guy down over in the one that's.
Hey, as Mike is cooling the room off for us, we are going to move on to our second text amendment of the um, this particular text amendment, rather than coming from a, a private property separate petitioner, this one is actually coming to us direction from town council after their visioning session this spring. Um, and it is text amendment TXT dash twenty-two dash oh three requesting a revision to the food truck and food park ordinance. So again, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks. Yeah, this, this came out of discussions from the, the budget visioning session council attended. Um, currently a food park defined as a designated area where two to eight food trucks or trailers may park in that. Also, food parks should only be permitted as the principal commercial use of a property. Meaning they have to be located on a property without an established principal use. Um, the main difference between a single food truck or temporary vendor being permitted currently in a property in a food park is the food park triggers a list of additional development requirements that are in the code. Um, these include permanent restaurants and washing facilities, a minimum of two tables per temporary vendor or food truck, one common sign and a loud for the site, four parking spaces per temporary vendor or food truck. And then the, one of the larger ones is that the sites and structures have to meet requirements of the zoning ordinance, which basically means commercial site plan compliance. So if a food park is being established as the principal commercial use of a property, it needs to meet the landscaping requirement, commercials, uh, landscape of urban, that property, residential property, dumpster screening, et cetera. So other parts of the zoning ordinance do apply. So the proposed text amendment as drafted by staff modifies chapter one eleven, which is the temporary vendor ordinance of the council regulations. So the specific change is that we're changing the definition of food park originally as two to eight food trucks, three to eight food trucks of trailers. And then staff also added just some clarifying language, specifically in one eleven point zero zero six. Clarifying that one to two food trucks, again, if this is adopted, can only be permitted as a commercial accessory use on a property with existing commercial principal use. And then food parks can only be painted as a principal commercial use on a property with no existing principal use. Because there wasn't this clarifying language before, I think that's what's led to a little bit of confusion where there was a food park that was permitted on a property that had an established property. So by including this, staff's just trying to avoid any confusion in the future.
That's important, right?
Of course.
So if they have one, under this proposal, if they have only one or two, they can't just be on vacant land somewhere. They have to be somewhere where there's a primary. They have to be somewhere where there's a primary use in place already.
As this is written.
As this is written.
Yes.
Make sure I understand that.
Well, is if there are only two trucks. It could still be a food park just waiting on the third truck, right? You don't have to have three trucks. If you want to, let's say for instance, I want to build a food park, food truck park. And I only had one truck, but I knew someday maybe I'll have three. Can I go ahead and build a park, have it permitted for three or four trucks? Even though I've only got one.
That's not how I read this.
It's not, so it's not, it's not defined really currently. Um, in theory, if, if I go off your example. If I were to do, to do a, a commercial site plan review for a food park on a vacant property. Um, I would permit them for up to three spots and basically we would approve a site plan. Laying out those three parking spots and, you know, three times two tables and. You know, three times four spaces per vendor and all of that for the full three. But there's nothing in the ordinance as written that says if only one food truck shows up, then you're permitted for three that is not allowed.
So it's driven. Yes, sir.
But they would still have to have the facility.
Right.
Correct, for the three.
For the three.
And we would, we would actually in the site plan review designate, you know, where on the property those three food trucks would be parked. But I can't compel someone to have all three there.
Just the capacity.
So, so we are not saying if you have less than three trucks, you can't have it on as standalone. But for it to be standalone, it has to be permitted as a food truck park.
I don't think I, I don't think I followed the second part, but.
So, okay, so if a person has a piece of property that they want to open up for food trucks. And there's no other commercial use, they have to go through the food truck park.
Correct.
In order to use that as a standalone. But that's saying if you already have a business, if someone wants to put their food truck there, you can have up to two without going through all.
Exactly.
And in order to be classified as a food truck park, they, there has to be provision for a minimum of three. Food trucks.
And.
In the construction plan laid out, everything laid out.
Correct.
Okay.
But if, uh, like what Big Mike said, that, you know, if they want to bring one, one more in, that would be okay.
No, well, sorry. If this is adopted as presented, no. Because it would be three and it would be considered a food park, which is not allowed.
Have one down there, right?
Technically, they're permitted for two and that's part of what led to this whole discussion. Um, there, there's a, there's a second food truck that are obscured. They do barbecue skewers, skewers, the school bus that is oftentimes at the moto greenhouse, I think, down here. But long story short, he, he, he got a food park permit for two food trucks, which again. As the ordinance is written, not included in this text amendment is a food park. And that was some of the confusion that, that went where we are.
But if I wanted to go across the road where Big Mike's intended to go originally, I think. And, uh, that's wide open. You want to put one over there, then they're gonna have to. Provide all the facilities we talked about. Yeah, yeah. And set it up for three.
Correct.
I know that previously this puts the planning board in the crosshairs of great debate in the community. Um, and so it's one of those things where I'm of the perfect, um, of the opinion. We leave this alone and let council deal with it. That's my opinion, only because we really got raked over the coals because of this. Um, and, uh, because I was part of it and got yelled at very seriously by a community member. Remember that very vividly. Uh, so I'm not sure, uh, to what end that this ends up accomplishing anything. Um, uh, I will, I did have one significant thing that came up. What happens on, it, say an event, say a business wants to have an all weekend thing? Is that just a special permit kind of thing? And I must have not read that.
No one wants for us up to seventy-two hours of special.
I got it. Okay, I did not, oh, and there it is. It's, soon, as soon as you point it out, I see it.
Need a special event department.
Right.
So one, nine twenty-five dollar fee. And again, it's similar to the review staff does. Even if one or two food trucks go on a commercial property, you know, to make sure, uh, access isn't hindered. The part, you know, parking or ADA parking is not blocked, but a site is still operated safely. And that was one thing I wanted to hit on, you know, when, when staff does look at one or two food trucks, again, if this language is adopted. Uh, for an existing commercial property, you know, we're gonna make sure that the site is still gonna be able to function. And I guess what I, what I want to say is that if there's a, a very small commercial site and if they want to put two food trucks there. If it's gonna take up required parking, kind of block, you know, ingress and egress. That's something staff would not approve because again, it's, it's in, uh, one, one, one point oh five H. Which basically states that a vendor operations or food truck as an accessory use cannot impede or otherwise compromise. Vehicle access, pedestrian access, parking arrangements, et cetera of principal uses on the same site. So staff still has discretion to not allow the permitting of a food truck. If it hinders the functioning or safety of this existing commercial site. But again, that's just food trucks as an accessory use, not food.
Mike, I had one question.
Yep.
Uh, I believe it's item eighty-nine on page four under food parks. Um, it says permanent restaurants and hand washing facilities shall be provided on the site. Is that talking about a portage on or a permanent like stick mill or?
So I didn't hear.
That's a portage on would not be allowed.
But it's not defined.
Right.
I, I go off, you know, what's written in the code and it's, it's not defined.
And get it need to find.
Of course, yeah. I mean, again, the, the text coming before this board is just what staff has drafted and, you know, it, it's just what we.
I just think that'd be better.
The planning board. Yeah, the, the planning board has the authority to modify it, add language, subtract language and then, you know, recommend or not recommend. With those four seats that. Um, you know, if, if you want to see a definition for permanent restaurants developed, you know, staff would be happy to do that. But as I'm aware, it's, it's not defined.
So, um, my question is, first of all, currently in Mills River, this is some of the data that I asked you about. Um, how many food truck parks are currently permitted?
Food truck parks?
Yes.
One.
Just one. Is that food truck park in compliance with the current standards under which it was intended?
No, but it was also, there were mistakes on both sides. I mean, again, staff made the mistake of. Permitting a food park as an accessory use, which again, wasn't clear in the original code. Um, and there were also issues with the property owner complying with the approved site plan. Which, I'll say eventually all that was just drawn.
Can you say that was all just drawn?
Not pursued, compliance not pursued by staff.
So they, they are allowed, they are currently being allowed to operate technically out of compliance.
True, the department was also issued a neighbor.
Have you had any additional inquiries to establish food truck parks?
The only other one would be, uh, directly across the road from the current food truck park. Which is at, uh, forty-one seventy-six Haven Road and across from that is, um, the lease property, the vacant property. But the, uh, well, my fault.
Is that pri- prior to or after this?
No, no formal application was ever filed, but there were inquiries and conversations with the property owner. About developing a food park there and, and ultimately they decided the cost of compliance with food park standards. Specifically the commercial landscaping requirements for parking areas for street landscaping and for above where, we're gonna be too much.
Um.
He was looking for two then, right?
Yeah, which currently as written.
If. If a food truck is, is being operated as an accessory use. Is the food truck itself considered an accessory structure?
No, because it's a vector mobile unit. I think some of those may be defined in the code where we go into the definition of a. Food trailer versus food truck. Well, so food truck, a mobile vehicle supporting a food business, so that would not be considered a structure and then food trailer. Mobile food business unit that would be hitched and towed by a vehicle.
So anything that's movable is not considered as structure?
Correct. Now, there is a definition for food stand, which I don't really see referenced anywhere on the code. But that is defined as a food business in a non-mobile structure without door lockup service. So that, a food stand, which again, since it's defined here, I would think could be allowed as part of a. Food park could be a permanent structure.
I was, the only reason I was asking was just to clarify if it were a structure or a building, then there would be certain places. That it would be allowed to come in and leave your yard versus.
Correct. Set facts would apply and, and in the case of the current operation. Um, uh, an awning or overhang was required by the health department basically for food safety reasons.
Um, and we're all sharing opinions tonight, so I'm gonna share mine. And I'm like Keith, I sat in on. The discussion of, of developing this food truck ordinance that came to us. At direction from town council, they sent it to us and wanted us to develop it. We went back and forth and back and forth. We had several meetings, we put lots of hours into developing this. One of those meetings, we invited town council to participate with us. They came, they gave us feedback, clarification of what they wanted. Um, and we hashed it out and ironed it out and got to where we are now. And personally, from my perspective, it's very frustrating to have them then come back and say, well. Somebody's complaining, so we don't like it and we want you to change it. Because that's what it feels like. That might not be what it is. But that's what it feels like from my perspective, that you have someone who doesn't want to comply with the way it is. And it's only been, it's only been there for a year and a half. Let's give it some time to see if this is going to work or not. And the fact that there's really been no active additional inquiries for a food truck park. Makes me think that it's been pretty effective the way it's written, um. That's just kind of where I'm at with it. And I would love your input.
Sorry, I don't know if your mic is on.
Oh, that's just a tragedy.
That was your best.
That might be your.
I mean, it's on and it's not muted. Cause I just moved it and turned it back on, so.
It was on.
So was there nothing in place before that time?
There was nothing in place, so we were given instructions to develop it just because we were starting to sit. You know, and. I.
I think there's a huge deterrent in place to try to go from accessory to, to. From accessory to park, though, there's a huge deterrent. So I don't know if people will think about the cost associated with that. That's a chunk of money. To go from just being an accessory truck. I don't think, you, you know, the, the comment that no one's applied for one, I doubt anyone will for only two trucks. You just can't justify that. Where I would think, Cassie, or that a lot of these breweries around here that we've got with these big parking lots. Would love to have two trucks. And they have all these things inside their buildings right now. So I, I think you might see a lot of people, not a lot, I'm trying to find another language, you might see several companies local. Request a second truck as an accessory, if it were allowed, because they have the facilities to support all of that. ADA, your, your permanent flowing water, every, but they're totally deterred from, you know, the. The, the cost if they don't have it. So those ones that don't have it. Um, you know, Banner Farm Road, you know, wherever they, they might be, I think, you know, I'm sure it's a really long answer. Arriving at one, it's.
But as, as written right now, like the breweries, the places that could have more.
Right.
Because they do have the infrastructure.
Right, I'm sorry. They, they have it, the ones that don't, right. So, so landing at one, I'm curious, I'm sure it's a really long conversation. Cause I'm sorry, it wasn't there, but there was a reason you landed at ones to the two. I'm just curious what the meat of that was.
I, I think a lot of it was, um. Aesthetics of what the potential ones weren't looking like, um, things not being. Not maintaining what we would expect in most, I guess. And, and, and see, I hesitate, that doesn't sound right, um. Help me out.
Help me out. I'm just, I'm just looking, I'm just asking because I wanted to help you have an opinion right now. I was trying to think what's.
Well, I, I think you stumbled though onto part of that though, Brian, with, with what you were saying is, is that the places that could host. Already can't host.
Right, they're not though, but I, I should have, I should have asked. They're not going to two, right?
Well, places like.
As far as I know.
Right, like Mills River Brewery in Boulder, they have the one, they could do more.
That's what, that's what I should have asked. They're not, they're not going to two accessories right now, right?
Correct, because it's not permitted. Two, as their ordinance is currently written on the books, two is a food park, which would trigger all those additional development departments.
Not for, not for some of the larger facilities.
So would, yeah, and well, does it, that's the whole thing, because currently a food park is defined as two to eight food trucks.
But, but what we're saying is like the, the breweries, it's just they already have restaurants there kind of like.
Correct. They're commercially compliant.
Right, that's what.
All they'd have to do is apply for.
They're, they're very satisfying.
I assume so, and again.
But, but they're not applying, they're not bringing in a second truck.
Yeah, I mean, what I, what I've seen just visiting them in town is that they, they will have, you know, one food truck parking spot. And then we'll rotate. So there's nothing staff can do, you know, to prevent, uh, food truck vendors from rotating. So in theory, again, if this new language were passed, a commercial site could have two trucks as an accessory use. And have two and both those spots rotate. You know, it's not, it's, it's not that one vendor has to park there every day. You're, they get it's about, about the site, permitting two spots and everything else going along with it with the site.
I think I might have said backwards the first time. I was trying to say, you guys corrected me. I, I guess where I was going is I don't see that where the demand, this isn't a response to the demand.
Doesn't, it doesn't seem to me.
Not since.
Whoa.
Yeah, I'm gonna blow the joint away. Testing, testing, okay. Yeah, definitely not since we had the ordinance put in place, you know.
My question is, if they were to have more than one on, getting under their ordinance now. Then it would have to be a food park and it would have to be freestanding, right? Or is it written now that it would have to be?
No.
Am I missing that? So now.
Not have, currently it would not have to be freestanding.
Okay.
I don't know what you mean by freestanding.
Like on a, on its own property, not associated with.
Correct, so, so as the code is written now. An existing commercial site cannot have two food trucks because it's a food park, which must be its own principal use.
Two or more today cannot be accessory.
Correct.
I think that confused me a little bit. If there's two or more.
Today.
Two or more, that has to be the principal use.
As it's defined, written on the ordinance books now.
That, that's why these breweries don't have two.
So how did that work out with what we currently have?
Well, that's the problem is the, the clarifying, the clarifying language, you know, forget the definition, two or three. The clarifying language I added is meant to clarify that, I don't know what else to say. Because that, that was the mistake staff made is that, you know, it, it wasn't clear enough.
Regardless of the number, can I ask this for me? Regardless of two, three or fifty, if it's a park, that has to be its primary use.
Right, on a vacant parcel.
That's a problem. That, I, oh, yes, I, I'm sorry, but that's correct, because I think we just threw like four things around there.
I think we did.
In my, again, this predates me by time here, but my understanding was, was the. There, there were properties that were vacant that wanted to host food trucks. There, there were properties that were vacant that wanted to host food trucks. And this, part of the reason this ordinance was established was to have standards for a food truck being on vacant. He's a property with no principal use. That's my brief understanding of, of why it was.
So to summarize, you're saying that we shouldn't have issued the permit that we did?
Why, so there were errors on both sides, staff and that.
Yeah, but that's, I'm, I'm summarizing that, I guess, it's what I'm saying, yeah, okay.
Because that property had, already had a principal use in place, is the problem. Okay, so. To me, that, yeah, well. Me, that's more. Urgent to clear up than the actual number. I'm saying that if you have, if you're a park, it has to be the primary use. Because I don't think there's really a high demand for anyone doing that. We don't have any application for something like that, freestanding park.
Here, you would have to.
No, like, like, we don't have any, we have, we have no history of that?
I, I've received no inquiries since the one property in question.
Again, I'm, I'm asking because the demand should be driving this conversation. If no one's interested in something, why would we spend a bunch of time talking about changing? So, yes.
Covering bases for the future. They may not today.
Right.
Uh, and if they only have one or two, and it could be attached to a. Already in business. Um, fine, with the new regulations. But if they want to have three or more, we're. We're basically restricting that so that we don't have. A, a three or more in a single. Already established commercial business.
Already established.
Already established. It's already established, Mills River Brewing, you know, burning blush. Right now, they're only allowed one.
Right.
If they're allowed at all. And one of them has two, I guess, I don't, two of them have two. Which we've already addressed. And we're gonna open that up and allow that based on the new regulation. We're gonna allow those. Commercial in business already to have two. We're not gonna allow them to have three. Somebody wants to move three food trucks into a particular. Section, then that has to be in a food truck park. Which has to be established and pass all the rules.
And be the primary use.
And be the primary and only, yeah.
Like Mr. Austin saying, that's a pretty expensive undertaking, build whatever we define as a permanent bathroom. Permanent restroom facilities. It's one thing to throw down, you know, an ADA parking spot, piece of concrete. And gravel the rest of it, and a couple of tables, but when you gotta have running water. If that's a permanent restroom. And sewer or septic or something that's permanent, it's pretty expensive.
A porta potty is going to be acceptable in a food truck park as the new policy is written?
As the new, as, with the new language?
The new language.
Again, I, I, I say it's not defined, I, I will say in previous conversations with a specific. Someone that didn't apply, but that was interested in food park. There was a discussion about no porta potties, but having, um, one of those bathroom trailers. That would be, you know, anchored to the ground, still have water service, but have a holding tank, just like. An R, you know, RV, a gray water and a black water tank that would need pumping. Um.
But that's, but that's not as written in the new.
It's not defined in any way, yeah, it's a interpretation.
So if somebody currently, under the, under the new regulations that we're looking at. If they want to put in a. Food truck park. And you went out to check out the site. And you said, where are the bathrooms gonna be? And they said, we're gonna be using porta potties. Then you might ask, well, what's your water, what's your water source? Okay, we're gonna have a little water truck or whatever. According to the new regulations that are proposed, that would be okay.
You, you're asking an interpretation question, because again, none of this is defined, so there, there is nothing in the ordinance. All it says is permanent restrooms and hand washing facilities must be provided. But again, that, that's where if it's not defined, if there's not a specific definition of what that is, it's my job to make an interpretation. And I'm, I'm saying, there's been a situation, not with a, someone that's applied, but in talking with someone. Where a restroom trailer was considered acceptable.
Because it was tied down.
Yeah, I mean, again, they're both portable, porta body, porta potty can be put on a truck, a trailer can be hitched to a truck. So what's different? I don't know, but, uh, the permanent restroom, barrier, construction costs, utilities. Was gonna be insurmountable to this person. And so again, since it's not defined, that's where staff made an interpretation, is that, well, if you can get a restroom trailer, get it. Permanently anchored to the ground and screened, that would be. Because it's not defined.
And again, because we are just. You know, our role again is advisory, we're simply just sending a recommendation to town council, but one of the things that we can do is. Whatever, you know, if we were to recommend an approval, we could. Do that with modifications suggested, rather than just as written. So that's something that we can, is this one that we can table to consider longer as well?
Yeah, I think one of the standard options is tabling up.
So one of the things that we can do is we can table this, if you guys want to go and read up on it further, that's certainly an option that we have as well, to kind of think about it. As you've heard more information tonight, you can think about it further, and we can. Table it for the future, if you feel like you want to do that, you know, there's, there's some options there for us, so.
I'm just not sure, I understand what the objection is to the way, I mean, the. Just, just the objection to the way it's proposed. What is the objection to allowing it through the way it's proposed?
If, if you're just throwing that out to everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
I, I'm just trying to start somewhere with it. I actually have no problem with. Something that already has a primary use, like we keep saying, it's just because they have the biggest parking lots and the deed. I have no problem with them having two accessory trucks, I, I think that's perfectly fine, you seem to think that's okay too. Yeah.
If things are, no, I, I think that's okay if.
That's one of the things this would accomplish, that's the biggest thing I see.
Right. So you have no objection with that?
I don't, that part, I know, there's some terms here that.
How about the three to eight? How about the trailer park? Do you have an objection with trailer park?
The food truck park?
Food truck park, yeah.
I, I don't have any problem with it, uh, at, at all. The number could be talked about, I don't have a problem with it being.
Three to eight.
Three to eight, I mean, what, the number. It's less important to me than the definition of understanding. The, the primary use thing throws me a lot.
Well, and I think because we had already made the precedent of establishing the fact that a food park could be attached to.
So if, if it is going to be the only facility on the property, things that go along with that, to me, you use the word permanent. That's the primary use on that property, permanent used to be permanent, what we all think of when we hear that word, not all this other stuff. So I'm looking at this in buckets. The two accessory food trucks on any property that have a separate primary use already in place, I think that's great.
The over.
I just saw three people shake their heads, so I'm not sure. I think I'm with you, what's the big objection? I think there's other parts.
So I think the one, moving it from one to two, as long as there's already a primary structure that is associated with. That's fine, let's, let's put a check mark on that. Then, then there's only one other. Change that we're making, and that is, I think, to define what a. Food truck park is, that's the only other thing. So we've got the first one, one to two, moving to two, that's all done. Why can't we say, yeah, if somebody's got a million dollars. Well, maybe it's five million now, to put in a food park. That's got a bunch of, you know, eight vacant places for, with, you know, sixteen, whatever, if they got the money to do that, they want to do that. What's the problem?
I think you're right, what you said to me earlier, planning for if that happens.
Right.
I think that's where I was pulling back, the terms here are too vague for me, especially if the word permanent doesn't mean what, what I think it means. I think that's a separate conversation, and everything is triggered by the food truck park, this conversation, I don't think it's settled today.
You don't think it's what?
I don't think that gets settled here today, those terms and the.
Well, it's the term food truck park is defined as three to eight.
So, so the permanent part of it.
The permanent part, well, it's, it's gotta be a lot, I mean, that's all that will ever be. At least until it gets sold or whatever, and, and it's a lot, but. It's not a secondary business. It's, it's the primary purpose of that lot that is approved for construction. Is only for food trucks. So if they want to move eight food trucks in there, God bless you, but you gotta have bathrooms, you gotta have the running water, you gotta have the ADA. Picnic tables, the whole nine yards, if you want to do that.
It's a parking surface. Is there any trigger in there for that?
Parking surface like tar or gravel or?
I'm, I'm asking exactly. So that's another example of where. Is it important? Yes, yes. I don't want to see twenty porta potties on a gravel parking lot. In my tent, I'm sorry, I don't want. I don't care what the, it's my opinion is, I don't want to see them. So, yeah, that's important, okay. Anything that's triggered. As a primary use, it's already compliant, right, Michael? Put a truck there, the property itself has to have a primary use, if the truck is just an accessory.
My favorite answer, it depends. If it was, if, if it was permitted, you know.
In theory, we're not, we don't police them.
Yeah, well.
We don't.
We don't have the staff police, but.
That's a different conversation, it's frustrating, is that answer.
The, the town's young, the town's only been around since oh, three, ordinances have changed in that time, and, and. Businesses and structures that were permitted before that were permitted based on Henderson County's rules and regulations. Those exist as legal existing non-conformities that don't have to comply with our ordinance as long as they stay the same.
Once they make a change.
So, yeah, there, there are businesses out there that don't currently comply with our landscaping standards or zoning, or.
There I go again, with once it becomes a food truck park, what are these definitions that are, that, that, oh, everything is triggered, it's landscaping triggered. You have landscape, or we, the landscaping's in there.
Yeah, as, as, um. Number five, that sites and structures must meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, which basically means commercial site. So I, I bring in landscaping, because one of the larger cost items, it just depends on the site and.
Parking lot, like all that hardscaping, that could all be.
Yeah, and, and again, I mean, going back to your pay, uh, parking surface question, I mean. You know, asphalt, concrete, or, or gravel, you know, is, is considered acceptable. Again, from staff's interpretation, but it's not defined.
Would you concur that should we ever have the personnel to enforce the things that need to be enforced? The more succinctly defined things are, the much easier it is to enforce.
Correct, and that's, I mean, again, that's why staff went a little further than what council asked for, and. Tried to include some of this clarifying language, even though it's a word here or there. Specifically stating, no, this can't be, uh, no, a food truck can't, or food park can't be a accessory use. And food trucks, one to two as written, can only be an accessory.
So, so John, in, in theory, I'm a hundred percent on board with this, I'm starting with some of the. Great, so much great, it's all definitions. But if you're asking to slide it from two to three, but we don't change anything else for now. Then I would be one more than that, actually. I feel two accessory trucks is perfectly acceptable.
I would suggest, however, if there is verbiage that you definitely have a problem with, and this is the opportunity. Obviously, this is not, we don't have these people standing in the wings waiting to jump in on this.
Right.
That this might be the time to say, we'd like to table this, but we'd like to come back with some definitions of this and this. And this, before we then said, because if we see, if we just say, yeah, this part we're gonna change, we said it's town council, and they say, yes, it's changed. Then you may have to go through this whole process again, you know, I mean.
Well, it is what it is.
Forward thinking.
This is what it is today, right? Food parks line eighty, eighty-eight, eighty-nine on. Has triggered him to right now.
Correct, yeah, there's nothing's redlined or underlined there, so.
I didn't change anything in the perimeter. So sliding that from two to three. And, and, and having this at the same time, this conversation at the same time. I mean, I'm, they, they have to go together, it's just ignorance asking, that's not.
Don't want to have a conversation with you.
We just want to strike the food park thing from. The suggested text. So that we can't, there's no. Option if we put this into place, there's no option for a food park, which would be three to more. Uh, three or more vehicles. Food trucks, you, if, if, if we scrap that, if we, if we made the motion to accept it. Providing that this section dealing with food parks is removed. Or alternatively, no food trucks will be, uh, parks will be allowed in Mills River, so that we close that. Is that? My, my, my issue is, I don't want to walk away from here tonight. Without having made some kind of. Firm decision on where we're gonna go if we tend it, if we table it. Let's have some kind of firm understanding of what we're gonna come back to next month, rather than coming back and. You know, rehashing it again.
So that's what I'm saying, what, you know, we can, if, if we decide to table, we can, we can. To like, these are the specific things we would like to see better defined.
And that's what I'd like done now, as opposed to sometime during the month. I'd like those things itemized, what needs to be defined. See, I just, I don't want to walk away from here tonight, have this whole discussion come up again next month. Um, what are the things that we want to define in here? I mean, and if we can come up with those things.
So, at. Define what does permanently, what does permanent restroom mean? Is that correct?
What, what's, it's a permanent restroom, what is the paving? Right, this is what I'm hearing Brian's saying, you know, what are, what are the paving issues? Um, should those be specific?
Well, they do say, I guess, line out of five, Michael, is. Be the requirement of so many ordinance.
She's found that line ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven and eight.
Well, as Mike said, it could be gravel, it could be.
Yeah, we don't have standards.
Yeah, just has.
No, the only standards are for subdivision roads, where pavement or gravel is required in certain situations with steep slopes.
In my experience, when it's not defined, the cheapest route is what happens, yeah.
So I would suggest, not gonna recommend the motion, I'm just gonna suggest that if, if there's. And it sounds to me like we're coming back to the restroom and water, you know, it's, let's, let's approve this. Pending. Addition to the wording that requires permanent toilet facilities.
Well, it does require permanent, we have to define what permanent.
Define, define what permanent means, yes, the permanent. Fixed structure, I don't know how you could do that, Mike. The, the, to, to, to prevent a toilet truck, a trailer from coming in.
Permanently attached to the. It's gotta be.
To the ground.
We had this conversation somewhere a while in the past, right?
Yeah, so, so the bathroom facilities, the water, running water facilities and septic of some form have to be. In the. Presentation for the approval, is that? That's what I'm asking, are those the kinds of things that we want to?
Me, yeah.
Are there any other issues, like? Emergency. Box, or anything, I, you know, is, are those the only real issues? Because I, I would be more than happy to make that motion.
Yeah, to me, they're, they're just two separate things, the number is.
Right, no.
Seems like most are the same way.
But when we go to define what a food truck park is, that's. What we need to nail down. Can we do that in the next, I don't know, fifteen, twenty minutes, half an hour, ten minutes? I, I mean, I don't want to, but.
I would ask, this is kind of on a different. Why? Whose benefit is it to have a? Whose benefit is it to have a food truck park only as a, not permitted as an accessory use?
Yeah, it'd also accelerate.
What if, I mean, just throwing it out here, what if a person had a business but hadn't outparcelled, hadn't sold? And so there's the business with restrooms and everything else. Well, if they could have three or four food trucks there, I would think like Ingles or someplace like that, I'm just making this up. Why, why is it that it has to be a standalone? I, I keep saying standalone.
Primary.
Primary use. Why, what, what does that benefit? Just throwing it, just throwing it out there.
You got it.
Is there any reason you couldn't have four food trucks as an accessory use?
Provided they're accessories.
Provided.
See, so that, that says, okay, it's gotta be within
We've said.
Certain distance of, because you said a, a sub lot that hadn't been sold yet.
And it may be too far away.
Do they own, you know, I mean, if they own the property, then that would.
If they don't own the property, then it becomes um, a primary use which triggers all these other things. I don't know. It's, yeah, it's sticky. I can understand y'all got a lot of aggressive encouragement over this. I can start to see why.
Well, both, both the things that we've talked about tonight, there's never been unanimous decision on it. There've been people that have fallen on both sides of the coin, and that's just the way some issues are. And again, you know, like I said earlier, I respect everyone's opinions, you know, and they're valid. Does it mean one's right or wrong? It's just where we are with things. So, and that's why we talk and sometimes we come to a place that we can either agree to disagree and move on, or we don't, but, you know.
I, I had some experience with food truck parks in Asheville. And, yeah, and there was never an, an easy decision made with those, and it was always a lot of work with planning for the town, the city staff constantly, things like that. And I never really understood what the draw of the food truck was, but the presentation we had is why build a brick and mortar restaurant until you know it's gonna work?
And, and for those of you who are new on this, I think part of the reason some of this came up in the first place was hope, because it was, it was too expensive to put up brick and mortar during that time. You know, you can have people sit down, you know, and all that kind of thing.
That was staffing issue.
Right. So that's kind of where a lot of this came from. Um, I think just reflecting back on some of the conversations from the initial purview of some of this, you know, what, what some of the concerns were, you know, somebody's just gonna drive in and, you know, back it in and it's gonna look horrible and there's not gonna be any sort of landscaping and it's not gonna be tiny and it's not, you know, and how, without being over regulatory, how do you make these things fit in Mills River? I don't have the answer. That's kind of what this was hoping to try and do.
More polarizing topic than I ever thought it would have been.
Absolutely. And, and, yes, exactly. What we thought might have been simple, it really kind of spiraled like this and it continues to do so.
On an island by myself, I don't want the parks, I, the idea of a bunch of trailers sitting there, like, it's the primary use of a parcel is, I don't want to see.
So there's a brewery over, and you all know, and I can't, name doesn't come to mind, off sixty-four, um, the other side of Etowah, I think it may even be Etowah. And it's a, it's a cidery or brew, brew at. Cider. And they have four or five, I mean, that's not Mills River, I don't think, but they have four or five food trucks out there of some sort all the time. What would be the problem with something like that where they have the property, as Jeff was saying, they have the property and they want to bring in five, six, seven, eight food trucks? As long as they meet what? I mean, it's a, it's a facility with toilet facilities, running water, and they're just parking these things out on their farm property. What would be the problem with that?
I think it's a case by case basis. I mean, again, one of the requirements is that staff has to review that. If we're talking about the hypothetical that you could have five trucks as an accessory used, you know, that staff has to make sure that doesn't lead the principal user of a safe operation of the site. So I mean, staff would do a review that, again, if there's ample land area, it's not taking up required carving, that the safety and rest, and rest and. You know.
So it could be acceptable. What would be the objections to having that, that are classifying it as a food truck park? You're saying you can have up to, I don't know, even why we want to put a number on it, but it has to be able to pass the current regulations regarding parking and all that. Oh, is there a problem with that? I mean, Bernie, I don't know if, um, it's cidery out here. Bull rock. I don't know how much property they have. But if they had, if they wanted to have three or four more food trucks in there for, you know, event or whatever, why couldn't we allow that?
They can do that now.
You do that.
Seventy-two hours, right?
But only four times a year on each, on any given.
With a special.
They're gonna have unlimited number of food trucks.
That's who's regulating.
It, it ended up being a lot about health and safety in the end, too. Uh, that was a major concern and a topic of conversation is, is that because I, I know for one, we ended up spending like an hour talking about lighting that never got included. Uh, because we're worried about you put eight food trucks up where and you don't have the proper lighting, people go take a tumble or anything like that. So that was all part of long winding conversations that we had. And that was ultimately, I think, why we ended up with the, um, uh, the permanent um, discussion about the restrooms too, is because it was considered due to the volume that eight trucks could have, a porta potty was not considered adequate enough in food safety. And what I mean by food safety, not food safety, but you, in that the cooks are washing their hands, but the people could be going from place to place without having adequate sanitation. So that was all a consideration in that.
Thank you.
Well, now that we've simplified that.
Water is more.
Are you open to motions?
I, I mean, if you, if you feel like that you can make it a clear motion that will satisfy everything you feel like we've talked about to move forward, unless it's to table it for another time and brings.
What are doing my most?
Perfect.
I make motions table.
We have a motion to table this. We have a second by Mr. Ross, all in favor?
Uh.
Me opposed. Okay. So then what I would suggest, now that we've tabled that, um, take a couple of days away from this, circle back around to it and take some notes very specifically on what you, either proposals or what you might like to see defined or talk to more people in the community. That's a good place to, to get some, some feedback because ultimately we have our own opinions, but we're representing a whole, a larger community, you know, so.
Did I read correctly that we are the ones who will approve whatever happens here? It doesn't have to go to council?
No, this will go to council.
Okay.
Yes. Again, we're making a recommendation and this, the change was proposed by council in the first place, you know, which leads me to think that modifications might be considered, but, you know, if they send it, that's what they want to do, you know, so.
Well, let me, it's all from my opinion. My opinion is I think it's a good idea to go to the food trucks. Maybe we should do with the food park thing what we did with the digital signs, eliminate it. Because even if we have a food park section, like Brian said, it's, it's gonna be cost prohibitive to, to, to do it. If somebody's got the money, fine, do it. But I don't think you're gonna, they're gonna be lined up. I don't think you're gonna be lined up to do it.
So you make those notes and bring it back.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna ask one more time if there's any direction for staff. The only thing I have written down is define permanent restroom and washing facility and permanent facilities. Define what about parking?
Would you consider, uh, parking gravel versus paved? If I remember correctly.
Parking purpose, you know.
ADA parking has to be paved somewhere to hard, all where there's. The other parking, are we comfortable with, uh, gravel parking?
So would they, would they have to have an ADA parking?
Certain percentage of it has to be.
Yeah, I can't remember the, the ratio, maybe one twelve or anything. Um, yeah, any ADA space has to be asphalt.
But I don't, correct, this might be completely wrong, but I don't think we can force rest of the parking, the non-ADA to be a specific type for this specific use anymore. Doesn't that have to be more broad? Can't single out this use to have to have, because we're trying to deter them because of the sentence.
So have.
You have to have.
You're asking, can, can we, uh, demand a paved ADA parking space?
Not as the entire park.
Um, I'd recommend against it because there's no standard for any other.
So I don't think that was, just to clarify, that was not, I want to clarify, it was just the ADA and it's a good portion, one out of twelve, I just think there's a little more of a eight percent.
It's been falling, yeah, right.
Uh, yeah, I was just saying, if, would it be, so if it's not necessary to define it, and then I'm fine with that, as long as the ADA.
It's obviously a separate standard that's just. All right. So we're gonna table that till the next meeting. And so now we're going to move to item eight, which is additional items in the agenda. So at this time, I'm going to toss this over to my, my friend, Mr. Wiggins.
Well, there you go. Um, it has been my privilege to serve on the board, uh, now for a couple of years, um, but my schedule has uh, increased dramatically and, um, I start my clinicals this month for my education process that I'm in, pursuing, um, a new pathway, my third career, yet I've retired twice and I'm going, I don't know what's going on with that. Um, but I will be a radiation therapist when this is all done and said, uh, so, um, but anyways, clinicals are undertaking much of my time and two toddlers are taking and what time's left. So, you know, I get up before it's light and I go to bed way after it's dark, so. Uh, but anyways, I, this is my last meeting. I appreciate the opportunity to serve with each of you, both old and new faces, as it were. And I think that's it. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
He has been with us for a while and I've served alongside him through many, many
Discussing.
Trials and discussions, so I.
Yeah, you can all have this continuing discussion without me.
So, so. So thank you. And so that means next time we will probably be hosting a new face. Thank you again for all your time.
I do appreciate.
Um, are there additional items that you need to mention to any council, additional or?
Just a brief staff report and catching up on some items, the sport scene. Um, I mentioned this in the last council meeting, um, but there was an acoustic credit union branch land or the corner of Presbyterian Church Road, near Presbyterian Church Road in Tanaity. And that project is, is not going to be moved on forward, just to eliminate construction costs, um, credit unions, I didn't know this, are limited by the state, the amount of capital they can spend on infrastructure projects like this. And unfortunately, with increasing costs, um, it was outside of the threshold that was allowable. Um, they do still want to be in those, or, or considering other options that, but that will not be moving forward. Um, I mentioned this at another council meeting, but I don't think I've briefed the board that we did receive the Jeffers Town Home Plans, um, and those have been reviewed by staff. I think a week or two ago, comments were sent to the applicant, so we're waiting devised plans on those. But if they do turn them around quickly, which I would expect, they could begin construction, you know, later this fall or winter. Um, you've, anyone driving on Banner Farm Road has seen construction pick up with the cottages of Roper Farm and, um, there was a minor, eight lot minor subdivision across the street. Um, Warren Sons, which is developing Roper Farm is now building houses on the lots across the street as well. So you're gonna see increased construction activity there. Um, they've been doing some utility work lately, so just, uh, be careful and drive safe and slow on that section of Banner Farm Road. Um, wanted to announce that we reposted the planning technician position just yesterday. It's gonna be open for a month, so we're accepting applications for that position as well. Um, first review of applications will be in two weeks, next Monday, or two weeks, Monday the seventeenth. And then last item, the TIA tax amendment, TXT twenty-two oh one was approved by council at their September eighth. So that is in effect, and there is already an industrial warehousing development that has gotten hot in the net, so congratulations. That's all I.
Right. So that brings us to line item number nine.
Make a motion with Jordan.
All in favor? Me opposed. So very much for your time.